Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2223-7. Consideration of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Clara and Johnny Smart, Pollard &amp; Whitehead Surveying, Inc., for WPDS Estate COS for 79.367 acres of property generally located on the south side of Franklin Road east of 108th Avenue Northeast. Item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2324-1. Consideration of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Mark Maps, Pollard &amp; Whitehead Surveying, Inc., for Maps Estates for 20.02 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of 36th Avenue Northeast and Franklin Road. Item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2324-2. Consideration of a Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by Oklahoma Gas &amp; Electric Bearing Tree Land Surveying, LLC for Norman Hills Substation COS for 60.0 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of 48th Avenue Northwest and Franklin Road. Short form plat. Item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2324-1. Consideration of a short form plat submitted by Stephen Lewis Plant Life, LLC Bearing Tree Land Surveying for 2516 Briggs for 0.52 acres of property located at 2516 Briggs Street. Preliminary plat. Item seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Simple Storage, LLC Blue &amp; Associates, PA for Simple Storage Edition for 9.85 acres of property generally located near the northeast corner of 24th Avenue Southeast and M. Hoff Road. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
Everyone has voted and the motion is zero.
Moving to our non-consent items, we will read items eight and nine together. Item number eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of Resolution Number R-2324-10. Simmeron Precious Metals, Inc., requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located at 1001 North University Boulevard from Special Planning Area 3 while retaining the commercial designation. And item number nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of Ordinance Number O-2223-45. Simmeron Precious Metals, Inc.'s requests rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial District to Spud Simple Planned Unit Development for 0.43 acres of property located at 1001 North University Boulevard. And I will take the staff presentation.
Hi, Melissa Navarro with the planning department. So the applicant, Simmeron Precious Metals, Inc., is requesting to rezonate the property at 1001 North University Boulevard from I-1 Light Industrial to Simple Planned Unit Development. Because the property is in the special planning area 3, the applicant is asking for a 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment to remove it from the special planning area 3 while retaining the commercial designation. This is a map of the land use plan. You can see the special planning area 3 highlighted and the subject track in it. This is the proposed one, removing the subject track. This is the zoning map. You can see most of the properties around are zone I-1, except for the one on the east side, which is C-3 commercial. You can see here the existing land use. Most of the properties are industrial, but then the uses are on the north. It's a children's aftercare center. On the east is the Pioneer Library. And on the south and west are industrial and commercial. This is an aerial of the property. You see it is located between North University Boulevard and Huber Street. This is how the property looks like. This is the front of the property. This is North Boulevard, North University Boulevard looking north. This is the intersection between the two streets. And you can see the library on the back of the picture over here. The entire purpose of this rezoning application is to add two commercial uses, a coin shop and a volume depensatory, to the current I-1 light industrial uses. The new proposed uses are directly related to the current use. The applicant does not plan to include any additional buildings. The stat forward, this request for rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial District to Spud Simple Planned Unit Development as Ordinance Number O-2223-45 for consideration by the Planning Commission and recommendation to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners? Is there an applicant presentation?
No, there's no presentation. But the applicant is here. If you have any question, he can answer that.
Are there any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Any audience comments or discussion by commission? Seeing none, I would take a motion for a movement.
I move to approve.
A second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted. The motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to our next items, number 10 and 11 together. Item 10, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of West Franklin Holding Co., LLC requests rezoning from A-2 Rural Agricultural District Planned Unit Development, O-2021-47 to PUD Planned Unit Development for approximately 26.232 acres of property generally located south of Franklin Road and west of 48th Avenue Northwest. And item number 11, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2324-2. Consideration of a revised preliminary plat submitted by McCown Family, LLC, SMC Consulting Engineers, PC for Red Sky Ranch Section 2 for approximately 26.232 acres of property generally located south of West Franklin Road and west of 48th Avenue Northwest. I understand we have a commissioner that has made a request to recuse. If we would take a motion for that recusal?
I move to accept the recusal.
And the recusal, can you clarify the commissioner recusing?
Excuse me, Commissioner McCollum.
Thank you.
I second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Oh, everyone has voted. Should carry seven to zero.
All right, moving on to the staff presentation.
Okay, so we have an application from West Franklin Holding, CO, LLC for a rezoning from A-2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Planned Unit Development and consideration of preliminary plat for Red Sky Ranch Section 2. The property is located in south of Franklin Road and west of 48th Avenue Northwest. You can see here the subject track. It is surrounded mainly by A-2 agricultural district, except for a PUD that is on the The land use for this one is mostly agricultural residential, and the land use plan designation is very low-density residential. This is an aerial of the property. This is the preliminary plat. We have received one protest letter from a neighbor in the highlighted property, you can see in this map, who is concerned about the increased runoff generated by the project and the negative impacts that might cause to her property and the surrounding properties. You can see here the property from a different view. This is 48th Avenue Northwest looking north. This is going to be Red Sky Ranch Drive as proposed in the preliminary plat. This PUD will allow the development of single-family residential and compatible uses, including accessory dwelling units. Stat forward, this request for rezoning to a PUD Planned Unit Development and Ordinance Number O-2324-2 to Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions for staff by the commission?
The protest, the owner of the land, that is protesting the development. Talk louder now. Sorry about that. At any rate, what's the grade level from this development to her property? Is it, does it slope toward her property?
I think we can see it in the, over here. Well, because the development is over here and her property is across the street over here. It, I think the main problem will be this area over here, but this one is already PUD. It's no part of this second phase for Red Sky Ranch.
If I understood her protest, she's more concerned about the water quality issues that may arise from this development.
Yeah, mostly environmental-related issues.
Yeah, so that's why I asked about the grade. Her property is much lower than the proposed PUD, then I can understand her concern.
She's here today, so probably she's going to add to this.
Ah, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff by commission? Seeing none, we take the applicant presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gunnar Joyce, attorney with Rieger Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. And we have a pretty good team with us tonight. We've got, click through some of these. Zach Roach and Richard McCollum are here with the applicant. And then we have Chris Anderson with SMC, the civil engineer of the project, Sean Rieger, Hayden Welch, and Libby Smith all with us tonight. Just real quick, Commissioner Griffith, to answer your question first, this property all drains to the west. And so this is designed, we'll see in a second, with a detention pond to retain all the drainage from this project in the northwest corner of this property. So we'll walk through it here. This is the site. We are south of West Franklin Road and as you see, west of 48th Avenue Northeast. And again, carefully designed so that no water runoff will go east of 48th. All right, so there's the aerial. This is the existing site. Here's the current zoning. So there's a lot going on in the slide. I'll try and describe it to you here. As you can see in yellow, that is the current proposal tonight. We're approximately 26 acres. The pink is a rezoning that was done, as Melissa mentioned, in 2021 that this proposal mirrors and retains the spirit of. So that was three lots in 2021. Tonight, two of those lots are included, and I'll show you why, because of basically access to the rest of the west of the property. This southern lot is not included tonight because it has already been final-platted. So not touching that one, that'll stay the same. The current zoning is A-2. That's the green that you see. The light blue is 100-year floodplain that's in the area. We have R-1 across to the northeast, and you have RE to the southeast on the other side of 48th, which is essentially what we are mirroring here tonight. RE allows for two-acre development. We are proposing a range from 1.4 acre to 2.4 acre. So we're right in that range, mirroring the spirit of RE. And the last little piece here is the Norman 2025 10-mile-flat designation. And what that was, was an overlay that was passed in 2004 that essentially said development to the west of this line was supposed to be one home per 20 acres. A-2 is one per 10 acres. And so tonight, we're requesting to lift that for this portion of the property. The intent behind that in 2004 was because the FEMA floodplain map went all the way out to this line. So this line mirrored the floodplain when it was passed in 2004. Since then, FEMA has done updated map revision studies that look at it in more greater detail. And as you can see, the new maps show all of this area outside of the floodplain. And when we go forward here, all of our lots and building area sites are outside of the floodplain, and we are respecting and not building in any of the floodplain area. So we're requesting tonight to lift that dark blue line that you see. Real quick, here's the 2021 site plan, and I show this just so you can see what was originally proposed. Up here, the northern road is a cul-de-sac that completely stopped. And tonight, the reason these two lots are included is because we are changing, the red was the original, and you can see underneath the new plan to extend into the western property. We're proposing overall 10 single-family lots. It is eight additional lots with these two again included this go-around. The lot sizes range, as you can see there, from 1.47 to 2.41 acres. And again, no building in the floodplain. So as you see on the preliminary site plan, each lot is entitled one main residential house. At this point, actual floor plans are way out in the future. We expect the kind of end product here to be in the upper, kind of upper market for Norman. And so the likely phase in full build-out is probably 10-plus years. So we don't have full footprints yet, but as you can see, everyone is entitled to one house, which is typical. And then one little nuanced piece here is, you know, the applicant wants the ability to have accessory dwelling units, which is essentially kind of the mother-in-law suite, which would allow aging in place, which will allow kind of multi-generational living on site. We have been very careful in the crafting of the PUD language to ensure this cannot in any way be used to have multifamily out here. You can't lease an ADU by itself. So each individual lot will be owned and occupied by one user. But this allows for, again, that aging in place, that multi-generational living out here in these very large rural lots. The open space plan for this is substantial. There's 6.77 acres that are shown down here. And again, it's mostly the floodplain area that will remain completely untouched. And then additionally up here is the detention pond that will control all the drainage from this development. And then once again, Commissioner Griffith, as you noted, the drainage is all going to the west in this project, and that is where it will be detained. Here's the site plan in context. A little tough to see, but I wanted you to note that all of the building lots and building pads are outside of the floodplain area. And here is, just so you can see, that 2025 designation, it'll be removing that from the site and we'll be respecting the floodplain lines. The phasing of this project, there is an existing athletic facility that's out there. The applicant would like the ability to retain that really for as long as possible so they continue to use it. So phasing is drafted into the PUD. The initial stages will be these first two lots, which is just like what was done in 2021, with the first three always planned as the first stages of development. Then the next stage will be the extension of the road and then down to the north and south arm of that road. And they'll peel off one by one, lots five through 10, with the last lots, lots three and four, being the final stage of development and the removal of the athletic facility. That, just a quick summary, is again rezoning from A-2 to PUD, mirroring the spirit of RE that's in the area, retaining the spirit of the original PUD for the three lots, and overall being 10 single-family lots that have that accessory dwelling unit allowed and the allowance for that athletic facility to remain until the final stage of development. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions by commission of the applicant?
The outbuildings are going to be specifically designated as residential for any type of property, or will they have the ability to be garage, workshops, storage?
They do have that potential. So we have kept the language from RE that says that you can have accessory barns and shops and buildings. The only thing we've really tweaked is that express allowance for accessory dwelling unit. There is an ability that's kind of popular in the marketplace right now is to have sort of that living unit in a barn, kind of the barn dominium. And so that's something that is possible here with the accessory dwelling unit allowance, but plenty of ability for garages and barns and shops as well.
The structure of those buildings, will they mirror the structure of the house in terms of veneers, wood style?
The PUD doesn't obligate that. The way we usually control that is in the private covenants that'll get filed. And so it can be, you know, usually typically we have an HOA that maintains and keeps up the appearance for all the lot owners. So the PUD actually just has the typical language we have about exterior surfaces and, you know, being able to have flexibility.
I'd be a lot more comfortable if we were to mirror the house.
And that almost always ends up happening because of the property owner. They've got the vested interest to keep this looking premium. And so we've never had to draft that at a zoning level, and it always takes care of it at the market level.
Richard McCollum, 4409 Cannon Drive. The way we usually handle this in the covenants and restrictions is that a minimum requirement to have like a wainscoting at the base of a metal building, a lot of times in a barn dominium context, you're wanting to build, you know, something that is taller, certainly, you know, than normal residential construction. And a lot of times, those buildings might be made out of metal or metal framing members for clear spans and things like that. But that's worked really well, where they mirror the house in terms of pulling those accents and details of masonry product. And it turns out pretty good. And we're definitely going to draft that kind of language into the covenants and restrictions if that makes you feel better. Montecito Ranch has been, you know, one of our examples where we've done that, and it's worked quite well.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've just got a quick question. Floodplain, you have the little slivers that go to the north.
Yep.
I'm assuming that when you dig the detention pond, you're raising the grade of those lots to cut those out and push everything back to the south?
Chris, you want to take that? Thanks.
Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main, Oklahoma City. And the answer is yes. That's the eventual plan when we get to that stage 10 years from now, when they build that out, is to get those lots built up. And obviously, the proposed detention pond is on the other side of that little sliver. So we, Richard and I have been kicking around a couple of different ideas about how to get that over to it, but we will have to cross that little sliver of the floodplain.
Yeah.
I'd also like to point out that that's not the only detention pond. Gunnar said that, but we've also got another existing pond that was proposed with the original PUD, and it's there kind of at the end of that cul-de-sac and on the south side of the sports facility structure. And that will actually handle about almost three-quarters of the site, and that was constructed with that first final plat that came in. So it's already there, and then this pond will go in in the future when the rest of the build-out happens.
Any other questions by commission of the applicant? I will move to audience comments. I do have one here for Louise Higginbotham. If you would come up to the microphone and then just say your name, I know I said it, but if you will say it and your address, and then if you want the warning for 30 seconds before, let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to yield a full three minutes to you, and then thank you for your comments.
Okay. I'm Louise Higginbotham, and I am to the east of this property.
Can you mind just saying your address, please, for the record?
4201 48th Avenue Northwest.
Thank you.
And my concern is for my neighbors. The runoff goes for me that direction. Water goes toward the river, which means it's going south and west. Having a retaining pond on the north does not make a lot of sense to me, but I'm not an engineer. I wanted to make everybody aware of the following things. First, I'd like to draw attention to the plan to haul dirt in and raise this property up you're going to build homes on. Then you're going to be putting water wells and septic tanks, which was explained at the meeting that they had in the old library a few weeks ago. My water well is 480-foot deep. The neighbors that surround this property have 50-foot water wells. And I'm just wondering what's going to happen when you have all these other deep water wells, because I'm sure they're not going to put in a 50-foot water well. And you're going to have the septic tanks, the runoff from that. I spent a lot of years in the lawn care business with selling chemicals to people to, we maintained, I worked for Scotts, and we applied all these chemicals and fertilizers, which is going to go right onto the agricultural land around. And any bag you pick up, you're, or talk to the county agent, you're not supposed to use this stuff around cattle or any other livestock. It is going to runoff onto them. My horse is safe, but it's not, I don't even use the stuff at my house for fear that it'll run down and affect them. But that's kind of a, you know, one of my real concerns is the people that are really affected by this aren't allowed to even know anything about it. They didn't get a letter. In fact, this is the first letter I've had in many, many, many years. And I have a 500-foot frontage, and now the property directly across from me, which belonged to one person, now belongs to a whole bunch of people. It's all cut up in little bitty pieces. I didn't get any kind of a notification, didn't have any say-so at all, and now I'm going to have all these driveways and stuff coming out in front of my house. I just think it would be nice to be notified. Maybe go back to the old days when you used to put a sign up out there that says, "Proposed rezoning," and a date or a phone number or something might be helpful, you know? I'm really concerned about the fact that, like I said, the drainage, where it's going to go, and, tiny pond. I, if you read the letter I sent, I don't know if you did, I talked about the floodplains and obviously little animals and...
Ms. Higginbotham, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. Are there any additional questions for either?
I just want to say one more thing.
I'm so sorry. Thank you so much for your comments. We want to make sure we leave time for everybody. I appreciate it.
Did you see the erosion? It's on him that should you have to see.
Thank you.
Because that's from the property at my new...
Thank you very much. I will confirm, we did receive your letter as well. Before we move on for any other audience comments, was there any questions for staff or the applicant after the audience comments? Seeing none, were there any other audience comments? Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Any other planning commission discussion?
I'm no expert, but I will say there was a lot of talk and a lot of studies about wells and how they would be affected by additional wells when the city, was it one or two years ago, needed to drill in Ward 5. And there were a lot of town halls and whatnot to explain how, the way the aquifer works, it wouldn't necessarily, you know, and it would be very, very rare to have an impact. The city wells that are drilled in Ward 5 are obviously handling a lot more volume than these wells. So I'm just making the comment that I do not think that that will be a concern that you'd need to worry about.
Well, it would affect somebody if they got a very shallow well, and then you've got all these other wells that are deeper.
That specific line of thought was actually discussed. They had experts from DEQ and, I forget the other agency, but they came out and they talked about how that, how that would be. And, and we have not had the issue since they have been functioning high volume. And my well is only, it's between 50 and 100. And so I would have expected if, if the experts were misleading us and that line of thought was correct, then I would have expected to see a volume and pressure decrease, and I have not.
I'd also like to make a comment just to address about the notice period, just to make this aware, too. Following planning commission, there is another period when protests can happen and another place for public comment at city council meetings. And your city council members all have emails and things, and you are welcome to visit with them in advance. So if you want to make sure you have chances to be heard, there is that other round, and I just want to make sure anybody who wants that avenue knows that that's available to them as well. Any other discussion items? Cameron, you want to say anything about ADUs? I did, I did appreciate the ADU sentiment about not being rented separately. I paid a special attention to that, and I know that that's been an item that has been a particular interest of many Norman citizens of seeing that. So be interested to see how that actually works in a multi-generational facet rather than, I think, some of the ways other places have seen and having an example project like that. So I'll make that comment. Any other discussion before we go to a vote or motion? I would take a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Oops, I pressed the wrong button. Now you may.
Thank you.
Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. I'm going to move to our next items. I'm going to read items 12. Oh, yes, we, can we have a motion to bring Commissioner McCowen?
Motion to bring Commissioner McCowen back.
Okay, we don't need a motion.
Okay.
Liz, you want to come back up? Welcome back. Okay, now moving to items 12, 13, and 14. Just a reminder, for those who hadn't seen, there was a letter for requesting a postponement, and that was administrative due to the Parks Board not being able to meet, but I'm going to read those items so we can make a vote to postpone. Item number 12, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of R-2324-12 Armstrong Bank. Request amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove Special Planning Area 7, SPA 7, while retaining mixed-use designation, and amendment of the future urban service area to curb an urban service area for 40.41 acres of property generally located south of East Cedar Lane Road, east of Classen Boulevard, and west of 24th Avenue Southeast. Item number 13, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of O-2324-3 Armstrong Bank requests rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development for 40.41 acres of property generally located south of East Cedar Lane Road, east of Classen Boulevard, and west of 24th Avenue Southeast. And item number 14, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2324-3, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Republic Bank of Norman, SMC Consulting Engineers for Armstrong Bank Consolidation Project for 40.41 acres of property generally located south of East Cedar Lane Road, east of Classen Boulevard, and west of 24th Avenue Southeast. Is there any comment from audience or commissioners? Any, would anybody like to go ahead and make a motion to postpone?
I make a motion to postpone.
I second that motion.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, carried seven to zero.
Moving to item number 15, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of O-2324-4 Hunter Miller Family LLC requests rezoning from R-1 Single Family Dwelling District to SPUD, simple planned unit development for approximately 1.5 acres located at 1104 West Lindsay Street. Take the staff presentation.
Zach Abell with the Planning Department. Yep, the applicant is requesting rezoning from R-1 Single Family Dwelling to a simple planned unit development, or SPUD, for about an acre and a half located at 1104 West Lindsay, near intersection with Berry. They need to request this SPUD for the development and design because of the lot configuration, particularly Lot 3. We should be, we should have a map of it right here. So here's the tract, the acre and a half or so right here. Oh my goodness, this mouse jumps around. Trying to get to the lots. Okay. Lot 3 didn't meet R-1 zoning requirements from my understanding. And so they're requesting a SPUD to get that, those additional two lots on site. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for planning staff, but I also believe the applicant has representatives here this evening. Do you have questions for them?
Any questions for staff?
Question? What currently sits on that lot now?
I'm sorry?
What currently sits on that lot now?
I believe on Lot 1, there is currently a house. Nothing is built on Lots 2 and 3, or the proposed Lots 2 and 3.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Gunnar Joyce again, Rehear Law Group, on behalf of the applicant here. There we go. Okay, so we're really at the intersection of Lindsay and Berry, southeast side. And this is a SPUD that really mirrors exactly what we did about two months ago, I think, right here at this site. And if you remember, that was a SPUD to allow two lots. This is a SPUD to allow three lots. And we, not to give any industry secrets away, but we copy and pasted that SPUD and we put it up here. So that's really what we're doing here. This is the existing aerial. This is the existing house, and as you see in our site plan when I get there, we basically on the survey have just shown this existing structure, and then we're two more houses proposed. No change to 2025 and the existing zoning, R-1. And then again, just like this, that's the one we did a couple of months ago. So we would do that again here. The surrounding area is R-1 to the north, to the south, and to the east. And then there's the commercial corners at Lindsay and Berry. This is the preliminary site plan, and just like the last one we did, there is going to be a shared access drive on this one in order to allow, all the way down the south, it's even wider. So it's a 26-foot drive for basically two-way traffic. You could have parking here if needed for additional, and that way no one has to reverse out onto Lindsay. There's room to kind of maneuver inside and then pull out in a safe manner. So again, three, three single-family lots. The only real change from R-1 is this road is actually part of Lot 3 so that it has public street access, but the access is 30 feet. And so really, again, the SPUD is just the creative layout to allow for that. But density-wise, it meets R-1 standards, coverage, impervious, all of that complies with current zoning. Here's the site plan, just to see it a little closer. That way is the north, and this really, you can kind of see the width of the drive lane. That's the site plan in context. And with that, really, just kind of summarizing there, no change to the allowable uses, no change to R-1 other than that frontage requirement, and we're keeping the spirit, and really, we're keeping everything except the frontage requirement of R-1. Without, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
I had a question. On the case we had two, three months ago, whenever that was, what was the proposed width of that drive? Is it similar to this?
Well, it's the 18 feet.
It was a single drive before.
And this is 26?
Yep.
And can you go back to what's existing there?
Yeah.
So maybe this is what you were addressing, is this, this is a, currently has a single drive on it, and you're expanding that?
Yeah, right. There's one single house, and then it just has one driveway off of that. So this will be widened, but I believe the access point will roughly stand in the same spot and basically utilize existing conditions as far as the curb cut goes. Didn't mention it, but the subdivision piece will be a short-form plat, just like last time, so that will follow after the zoning's in place.
Question? Is there a proposed detention for, for this change?
We do have, basically, tree gardens, the LID, low-impact designs, and best management practices are again kind of shown throughout. I know we have, I think, a tree garden. I might actually just hand this over if you don't mind. Steve Rollins is the civil engineer, and he'd talk a little better on the drainage plan on this one.
Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Rollins, Arch Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road in Edmonds. So yes, there are a couple of different low-impact techniques that would be used here, rain garden, something along those lines. One is shown at the northeast corner of the property, near Lindsay. And there's another one shown just south of the house on Lot 3. And that would catch hopefully most of the water from Lot 3, and then also some water from off-site that it would also catch. So that's, that's what's planned so far.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
While you're up there, for the nickel tour with what a rain garden is and how it functions?
So a rain garden typically has engineered-type soils in it. It's soil that'll allow the water to filter through that soil, helping to allow the water to percolate into the existing soil. And then it also cleans the water as it goes through. So there may be a pipe down on the bottom, or it may just percolate into the soils below. It just kind of depends on what kind of soils you have existing on the site. There are also plants that are planted within a rain garden that also help slow down the water, clean the water, things like that.
Thank you. And would you mind confirming, you can make a three-point turn within the proposed driveway?
I believe you can, yes. It's a 26-foot wide street, which is a regular residential wide street, so I think you should be able to make a three-point turn, no problem.
Thank you.
And, sorry, while you're up there again, will be concrete paving?
Yes.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any audience comments? Any planning discussion, planning commission discussion?
Really, my only comment, I think it's an appropriate plan to, you know, commend the increased density we need housing, no matter the size or the density, and this adds to homes in the area. The reason I was asking about the width of the street, or really the drive, it's because it's, is the width of the street. And it seems slightly excessive for access to three homes. I might, I'd have some concerns about the confusion from drivers, that they may think that this is a street that you can access. I don't know if there's a, and maybe that was a question for the applicant, I don't know if there's a plan for kind of designating this as private in some aspect, but I could see cars turning down and, you know, creating some safety issues and having to pull back out and kind of confusion with what's already a little bit of an issue with the traffic intersection right there. Otherwise, I think it's fine. I just, I'd encourage them to play with that a little bit. You know, I know that existing residential streets are 13-foot lane widths. That's, that may be the norm, but I think that you could have some reduction there, and you'd still have the two-way that you're seeking, so.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner discussion? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to accept or approve, excuse me.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to item number 16, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2223-31, an ordinance amending the Center City Form Base Code adopted by reference in Chapter 36 Zoning at Section 36, page 1 of the Code of the City of Norman. In order to remove duplicative language, clarify language, and correct mistakes, omissions, or errors, update references to the recodified municipal code, reference updated engineering design criteria to amend the Certificate of Compliance Applications requirements for site plan requirements, and to amend to add administrative adjustment authority to address utility and related infrastructure conflicts and providing for the severability thereof. Applicant presentation.
Good evening, Commission, on a east star with the Planning Department, and I'm here to, whoops, hold on here, got ahead of myself. This is a amendment to the ordinance, the Center City Form Base Code ordinance, proposed text amendments. As you may know, the city council last year in June of 2022, 2022, adopted some significant revisions to the code. And since then, the development community and staff have been living with that code and have found that there's some need for some corrections and clarification to the, to that, to that code, to just kind of clean it up. It is a living document, so it is expected that periodically there needs to be adjustments made to ensure that the Center City Form Base Code is in line with the community's vision for the area. The proposed amendments are being forwarded for adoption in order to just clean it up. They're not, their intent is simply to provide clarity and ensure that alignment with the vision for the center city. and ensure that alignment with the vision for the center city. And so I'm just going to go over those requested amendments that are proposed in the document. The first one is the removal of duplicate language in Part 603 and 604. It's simply going to remove the part that is duplicated, which is in 604. And then we're going to update the references. If you remember, back in February of 2023 of this year, the municipal code was recodified and to allow it to come into a new platform in MuniCode. So this allows for the correction throughout the Center City Form-Based Code document for those reference, the different reference code sections. Also, along with that, in February, we adopted the engineering design criteria, new engineering design. This would also update that throughout the code to the correct engineering design code. There's also an amendment in Part 204B2, which is the Certificate of Compliance Site Plan Requirements. This would clarify that property lines, required build lines, and parking setback lines are required on the site plan submission for the certificate of compliance, which, just to clarify, that that is something we've been asking for and it's now clarified into the code. Also amend the administrative adjustment standards to allow for relief from citing requirements to resolve any utility or infrastructure conflicts that might arise when an applicant is trying to comply with the Center City Form-Based Code. And then finally, or almost finally, update the internal references to allow for the above amendments. And then finally, the correction of any mistakes, omissions, or errors that are not substantial, but they are needed to clarify the code. And all these corrections are shown in the annotated copy that is provided to you in the agenda packet. And with that, I can take any questions that the commission might have. But I should say the staff has forwards this proposal for amendments to the Center City Form-Based Code as ordinance 2223-31 for its consideration and recommendation to city council. And with that, I will take any questions the commission might have.
Any questions by commissioner for staff? Any public comment on this item? I do have a comment card for item 17 right after this, which is another ordinance. Any comment for this item? Any discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to our last item, 17, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2223-47, an ordinance amending the Center City Form-Based Code adopted by reference in Chapter 36 zoning, 540 of the Code of the City of Norman, to amend the Center City Regulating Plan map, to amend the required build line along the north side of Boyd Street from a point starting west of Monet Avenue and continuing to the BNSF railroad right-of-way and providing for the severability thereof. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening again, on a East Star with the Planning Department. This is the Center City Form-Based Code proposed regulating map plan amendment. It's a companion item to the previous item that amended the text. Again, this is part of the clarification needed after working with this living document for a year and to ensure that the vision is being fulfilled. And, you know, specifically what this is for is for the required build line along the north side of Boyd Street to have it consistent with the remainder of Boyd Street and other areas in the Center City Form-Based Code. The proposed amendment would bring the RBL, the Required Build Line, forward to three feet behind the front property line. And this would align it with future buildings that get developed on the remainder of Boyd Street that are in the Center City Form-Based Code. Here is the existing Center City Form-Based Code regulating map showing the existing required build line. And then here is, whoops, I need to go back one. Here is the proposed, I want to make sure, let me do this again, sorry. I might have had a trigger frame. This is the existing. And then this is the proposed, showing the proposed three foot behind the required build line, sorry, property line. And then, and then I should let you know that there was a protest submitted, 8.7% of the notification area. And with that, staff forwards this proposal for amendments to the regulating plan as ordinance 2223-47 for consideration by the Planning Commission and recommendation to the city council. I also wanted to add that the existing parcels that currently have structures on them, they will not have to abide by this until they redevelop that property. So I just want to make that clear. So with that, I can answer any questions that the commission might have.
Was there any specific comments as to why there were protests?
Most of them didn't have specifically on the protest, that's what you were saying? Yeah, most of them just said they protested. One did express safety concerns that their home currently, the property, their structure that they have on their property currently sits back at 25 feet. And they're concerned that this would create a safety issue for their tenants when they're backing out onto Boyd Street.
Would you toggle one more time between the existing and the proposed?
If I can do it correctly. I just did it wrong. Okay, this is the existing required build line.
And what is the existing? Is it five?
It's about nine feet behind the front property line. And then, whoops, sorry. And then here it is as proposed at three feet behind the front property line. So there's the existing and there's the proposed.
And I forget, is it to the west of here where the Center City Form-Based Code ends? Where the campus corner area? Or is there another way to ask that? What is it just to the west of what you see here?
Still in the Center City Form? Is it excluded? The exclusion starts on the campus corner area to the west of Jenkins, correct?
So do you know what the required build line is?
Oh, do you mean immediately to the west?
Immediately to the west, yeah.
It would, you mean on like this property here over?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, those, it would be nine approximately.
That is the exclusion area, okay.
Okay, that is the exclusion, yes.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant slash staff?
I have one, I guess. What would the rationale for this change from 25 feet back to three?
Oh, well, what's proposed tonight is just a change from nine feet back to three feet. So it's a six-feet difference. The 25 feet was what it was prior to the Center City Form-Based Code being applied to this back in 2017 when the Center City Code came into being. But the idea is to bring the buildings forward and make it a more urban, walkable area. So that would, the purpose of tonight, part of the purpose of tonight's is continue that vision of having a walkable streetscape. And you do that by bringing those buildings forward and having to meet the sidewalk area and interact with the pedestrians. And so that's the purpose. So it's not moving it from 25 feet up to three. That, yeah, it's just a difference.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I was trying to flip through the code. There was a, just a discussion item that maybe they might speak on. But initially, there was an idea that there'd be some small landscaping in front of some of those residential, like very small steps and things. And I think that's what would potentially go straight to building and maybe be omitting with potentially some of those designs from some of the earlier design concepts. Somebody else who worked on Form-Based Code may more familiarly would maybe be able to speak a little bit more to that. Okay, we do have, if there's no other questions for staff, we do have an audience comment. I'd like to call up Rick Yules. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. And I know I just said your name, but if you will please say your name into the microphone along with your address. And I'm going to give you three minutes to speak. Would you like a 30-second heads up?
Please.
Okay, great.
Rick Yules, my address, 1409 Valley Ridge Road in Norman. I own the property, myself and my brother, at 215 East Boyd. So our property has already decreased in value based on what's happened at Monet and Boyd on the corner of that property and then two properties east. The building code is nine feet now. They had a, got that built at three foot. So it's already got an existing building that's out of your code that you're trying, and I think this is why they're trying to push this through. We had a meeting with the council. We sat down everybody that had a property in that area and some of the developers. And everybody came back with the same opinion, we didn't like it. They told us it was a mistake, that it was wrong. The guy that made the mistake is supposedly no longer with the city. But I don't know now if they're trying to, you know, fix this problem by making the whole block that way. Right now, the property in between two of those is 25 feet back with these at three feet. You've got, the properties they're building are three stories high. So it is a backing problem back out on Boyd Street. It's hard to see, but there's going to be accidents there. It's also creates almost like an alley. I mean, the house at 25 foot starts almost where the other one ends. And you've made this little alley back there that, I know if I had a college girl, I wouldn't want her in that situation where you're hidden from all views on Boyd Street. So there was a mistake, it's wrong. My whole deal is let's don't make another wrong. You know, I mean, you guys all had parents, I'm sure, taught you like mine did, that two wrongs don't make a right. That's pretty much held true my whole life. I don't know when it ever didn't. But your vote tonight is to make another wrong. I mean, it's going to, the guy that needs to develop, it's going to cost him more to develop. They've got utilities they have to move, OG&E, gas lines. That's already been an issue and a problem. You know, when we sat down with a meeting, there wasn't a good solution. I don't know what the solution is for the guy on the corner, but it's not to make it all worse. The three properties that are there and developed have been built in the last 10 years. We're not going to tear those down and rebuild it at three foot. So you're always going to have, it's going to look bad. It's going to look like, you know, at nine foot, it's not near. It's a big difference than what it is at three foot. I mean, three foot is almost on the sidewalk. So it's even going to be, I think, dangerous for people walking down the sidewalk.
Three seconds.
They're not going to be an out for them there, so. So that's what I would say is, you know, you know, if there's any way you can put it off and look at another solution, because I think the elephant in the room is the property at Monet and Boyd and two down from there that in some way give him approval or get him occupancy or whatever for the mistake that was made. We've already lost money based on property value. I ask you that you reject this so we don't lose more. I mean, it's property, but it's personal too, it's financial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or discussion?
Did we evaluate to see if it encroached upon any existing easements?
Yeah, I guess that was a really good point that our audience commenter made is, could someone maybe clarify if we have some underground utilities in that area or if they're overhead due to the age of the neighborhood? Yeah, if you happen to know or if someone else knows or maybe we can Google Street View.
As far as I know, the three-foot required build line is not going to encroach on any of the easements. Yeah, so, because the easements will be outside the property line.
Just a few comments. Just having taken a deep dive into this Form-Based Code, having worked on the TIF district in the area a few years back. This was a, this was a section of the code that many of us who were working on it felt like there was a mistake that was made with the nine-foot build line when it was originally adopted. And really, in the spirit of Form-Based Code, you're supposed to get as close to zero lot line as you can. Now, in this case, you've got a sidewalk, so you're getting pretty close to the sidewalk. I, I think it's unfortunate that we're having to backtrack in part because of, you know, having the discussion pieces of the development that occurred that was outside of the code. However, I do feel like this should have been in the range of a three-foot required build line from the beginning. So not trying to, I'm trying to separate the context of potentially why we're discussing this. And so that's where I am. I do, I do understand the concerns. Boyd is a, is a heavy-traffic street. My hope is that, maybe this is a little bit of a side, my hope is that this street has a road diet in the future that's actually called for in the Form-Based Code, that there's a rethinking of the streetscape for Boyd Street, reducing the lane widths, making it safer street. As currently configured, I do understand the concerns about backing into the street. But I think this is more about looking into the long-term future of what the street should be as opposed to exactly what it is right now, so.
I would like to comment, I understand the safety concerns. I think we have a responsibility, though, to ensure that there's a plan, like with a start date, of changing the road rather than assuming that it will happen in a timeframe that we want. My opinion is safety first. That word required is a strong word. I would be more comfortable if private property owners had the ability to choose, you know, within a zone and not be required that if they're building something new, that it has to come up to that three feet and potentially have the city look, the street look exactly the same and exacerbate safety issues. It's a very busy street in that area. Having had, my oldest actually reside near there. He was male, not female. I still had concerns. So I don't, I, I'm uncomfortable because of the safety concerns that are preexisting.
I think my biggest comment is going to be that there's individuals that purchase these properties and, you know, they probably purchased them for a fairly large sum, probably had a house on it and they scraped and they're going back with the project. My concern is that we're changing the rules on them midstream. You know, we're telling them, this is what you've got to do. And, and that might not be what they had planned. So I think that's my biggest concern. And I would prefer there be a period of time that they be able to maybe submit their plans and be grandfathered in for a period of time. And that would give them an option to whether or not they want to continue with that project or potentially sell the property to someone else. So I just don't want to change the rules right in the middle of someone trying to put together a project and then we change the rules automatically and it costs them additional. a project, and then we change the rules automatically and it costs them additional funds, additional money, so that's just my thoughts.
I definitely see the concerns on visibility, and I think I already said on a previous item, I'm a fan of a three-point turn and nosing out on a busy street. I think that the existing driveways can make that a little challenging in places. I also agree with Commissioner Brewer's comment of what the spirit of the Form Based Code was, was to have little to no lot line. I, I think there was some, some good ideas that were presented as to how a flexible grandfather period, a period of choice, you know, approximately maybe a one, two, three-year period, it kind of seems to fit of where development could happen in that time period and have options, but then be able to continue to move forward to what the street should be, could be in the future. I think that, that was an eloquent solution. I'm not sure how that would come to form in an ordinance that's already been drafted and delivered at this point. Maybe some staff could give me some guidance on if, at this point, language could be adjusted in the ordinance presented or, or additions to even be made, I guess, at this point for
Beth Muckler, Assistant City Attorney. Give me a moment, I'm going to turn. Whether or not an amendment can be had after something's already been noticed comes down to the scope of the notice. I don't happen to have it memorized, so I'm sorry. The answer is, I'm not sure. It would depend on the nature of the amendment. It's definitely something that you could be, add as a recommendation to your vote tonight, and that could be further evaluated. It's not, again, it, it depends on exactly what would be proposed, the wording. There's a potential for something like that to be fit in here, but it comes down to how it's done. So without it fleshed out, I couldn't be sure.
And are any of the staff members aware of any current issues that would be affected by this being voted on this meeting or not? Any other pending applications? Or are we aware of any other projects being impacted by this particular passing that are currently being presented?
We don't currently have any open applications that we're reviewing for DRT.
So I, I guess I'm hearing opportunity for improvement from how I'm taking this and maybe some interest in making some improvement for flexibility and possibly still moving forward without speaking for everyone here.
So for clarification, do we need to move to approve and hope that amendment happens? Or can we move to postpone and hope that it gets presented differently?
I think Beth could probably answer that, but I think her comment of approving with a recommendation to continue it forward or postpone with direction of what we are looking for, and then I guess you would be able to answer if we can postpone the same item or if it would need to be a new item depending on scope, I guess.
And so in general, when it comes to text amendments and zoning amendments, the expected vote from the Planning Commission would be a recommendation, yea or nay, with additional comments or not. The Planning Commission can postpone, but I, I guess I haven't seen it done without a specific request for postponement. But then again, the applicant here is the city. Typically postponement is a city, is a applicant requested situation. I don't think I've seen this situation before, I guess is the roundabout way I'm trying to say that. It's kind of a unicorn. I'm sorry?
I said it's kind of a unicorn.
A bit of that, but I mean, there's no doubt that you do have the ability to make a motion to postpone and to vote on that motion.
And if we made a motion to postpone as a point of order, would that potentially allow the city time to make revisions in line possibly with comments or open up on that and then come back at a following meeting?
Again, it would depend upon the nature of the revision, whether or not it would require a renotice back to the beginning.
So if the revision was a hopes of a, a grandfather opt-in, opt-out up to three years, would that be something that you would need to renotice and start over with?
If city staff's direction was to revise, again, it would depend on the manner, if it were a grandfather clause, arguably.
And just another point of order, if we voted no, would there be a moratorium for the city to bring this same item back in one year? Like?
No, this is a text amendment. This is not a requested change from one zoning district to another.
Okay, so potentially if it was declined at this point, it would still go on to city council as a point of order, because all we do, we, we would only be making a recommendation at this point. So it's going to move to city council even if we recommended to decline it, and then, yes, and then city council would make that decision, so.
Yes, if you recommended a denial with or without comment, it would still go to city council as any other item would, but with those comments in the record, of course.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on what our options are here? I think we.
They're either to reject based on or to accept with amendment, suggested amendment comment. That's pretty much.
I apologize, but could I just make one suggestion? For the clarity of the record, typically we ask for affirmative motions, and if the desire is to reject it, that'd be a no vote. But to do that now with a motion on the floor, she would need to withdraw. It's, it's up to you. I'm just clarifying.
Not a motion. We were discussing what the options were. Yeah, there's no motion on the floor.
Thanks for clarifying that. We've had that before, and it's confusing.
It can be confusing.
Combining my comment with Commissioner McDaniel's comment, I, I would be comfortable with making a motion to approve with the recommendation that there's an amendment that includes some sort of grandfather period. I'm not making that motion. I'm just saying that's something that I'd be comfortable with moving forward with.
Yeah, I think that's the general.
Yes, and I, and again, I think my, my concern is the existing property owners and, and us changing the rules midstream and the additional costs, the additional things that are involved in trying to, trying to do that redevelopment. So I think, to me, it'd be great to give those individuals a period of time in order for them to move forward under the existing requirements, or if they want to wait it out, then they can wait it out and be under the new requirements, so. Whatever that timeframe is, I'd leave that up to someone a lot smarter than me.
I have a question. Is there a timeframe? We referenced some improvements to Boyd Street. Is there a timeframe in mind for when that happens? You know, if you were to look at a grandfathered situation, the number of years, okay.
There's, there's nothing currently on the books. It's just a hope.
Yeah, I mean, basically, that's written into the Form Based Code as a recommendation, but there has not been anything formally proposed. I understand it.
David Reisun, Transportation Engineer for the city. We have a comprehensive transportation plan that attempted to address a road diet on Boyd Street. It didn't go far enough. We have a, an update that's going to council, what, next week? Two weeks? The contract, right, to, to update that, and that's one of the things we're going to strive to do better than we did the last time. So right now, there's nothing.
Okay, thank you.
So, point of order, could we vote to postpone until after the result of that?
So clarification, I apologize. So what's on the council agenda on the 25th is the contract for the city to engage in, with the consultants to update the comprehensive land use plan, transportation plan. It's all of our master plans. So yes, I mean, that would be a period of 18 months to two years when that is complete. But as far as the Boyd question, that's not on the 25th.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, does any other discussion we want to have, or would somebody care to make a motion very clearly and slowly so we can make sure we write it down?
Just one more thing. I'm sitting here looking at this photo. Are those electrical lines on the very front of the street there?
I did a Google Street View, and there are some poles out there, but I don't know if the majority of houses are receiving their electrical from overhead electric lines.
So if that building is, what, two stories, is that going to pose an issue or a problem?
We asked for clarification what that distance requirement is. We did not receive anything back from OGN E. However, we did some research, and, and again, this isn't 100%, but in looking at the codes that the building official found, it was approximately five to seven feet from the lines for the, the facade of the building. Those lines, as you can see, are on the outside of the sidewalk, so I don't know, you know, an engineer would actually have to get involved to see what the exact distance is going to be.
I do think that's an important clarification, to figure out if that might be there, that, that right there might be a reason to postpone to get, to make sure, because we do not want to change the code if people cannot build due to OGN E easement restrictions.
And can I clarify one thing? There is an administrative relief in the document right now that will allow the location of the building be back far enough that it would not interfere with the, the power lines utilities.
So like as an example, like hypothetical, if the required build line was three feet and there was an encroachment, then they could build it four or five feet, something like that?
That's correct.
Could I hear that complete verbiage that's built in?
For the amendment?
Do you actually want to hear what it says in the code? Or?
Well.
Or, or how it's put in?
If we were to approve it, what's built in to say it? Because the word required is still pretty strong there. I'm not seeing the, the relief verbiage in it.
Okay, so, and so the required building line, I think, is the required that you're talking about?
Yes.
And the required building line is throughout this inner-city Form Based Code?
Right.
So, right, so they have to build to that, but there is an administrative adjustment relief section that allows for it to be moved backward up to five feet in order to accommodate resolved utility or other vital or related infrastructure conflicts already existing. Utility or other vital, vital or related infrastructure conflicts must be demonstrated by the applicant and verified by the development review team and the director. So that's what is in the, in the code.
So it could be basically eight feet back?
If, yes.
If need be, okay.
Yes, and, yeah, yeah.
Mention that's a current amendment that's voted.
Right, and that, that's, that's a current amendment that was voted on earlier, earlier. So, yeah, and then I just wanted to, to point out, because maybe on the grandfathering question that Commissioner McDaniel had, are you talking about current property owners? Because current property owners don't have to follow the required build line unless they redevelop. So are you concerned about property owners that are going to redevelop? Are you concerned about the property owners that are already existing there?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the property right now, and it appears quite a few of the pieces of property are vacant, correct?
That's correct.
And so those individuals probably end up purchasing that property and, in hopes to develop it. Would that be considered a redevelop?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's, I guess that's my concern, is they've already, what if they already have plans and specs, gone through the architectural phase of that to go and, and file or prepare to file for something like that? I mean, now they're having to re-
Well, so as part of the process, just to let you know, so they first, usually they contact staff, and then they are required by the code to go to the development review team, and before they can go to the development review team, they have to meet with staff prior to that, and there's a submission deadline that's the, the same as, right. So we don't have any of those open right now, so, any of those development requests open right now?
Not, not requests, but there's, individuals could look at the code and go, here's what the requirements are. I'm going to go develop, I'm going to go, I'm going to go, my plans and specs and engineering all, and then, then can actually come to the city. So I mean, I just, that's what my concern is. And then, again, you've got one that's three foot, and then you've got one that's setback that's been built here recently. Now you've got one that's three foot, now you've got one setback, I mean.
That's, yeah.
It's going to look, it's going to look interesting.
And, and it's happened in other parts of the center city, yeah, that, because as it redevelops, it's not all going to happen at once.
But the three, but at least three of the properties are relatively new, correct?
Mm-hmm. The, the, yes.
Yeah, and so that's, I mean, again, I don't think those are going to be redeveloped anytime soon, so.
Yeah, just to comment on that, the, the three that I think you're referring to, unfortunately, you see that throughout the Form Based Code, that those were redeveloped prior to the Form Based Code being adopted, and we're going to have that inconsistency, but those were not built anything like to what a Form Based Code should have been built to. So I could comment more on that, but I won't.
Yeah, the other comment I'd have is that the center city planned unit development is always an option, too, that if somebody wants to design something different than the way the code is, they can apply for a center city planned unit development as well.
To Commissioner McDaniel's concern, I, I do understand what you're saying. It's, it's someone who bought a land for speculative purposes that they may be intentionally holding on to it, you know, waiting for some other redevelopment to occur. I know several people that are holding land, you know, they, they have a plan, they're holding it for two, three years for some intention, and the reason they're not doing it is, you know, they have a reason in mind. So I, I do, I do think that this phasing in, if you will, is important. Maybe grandfathering is the right word to use, but a delay period where this is actually implemented, where someone could opt in if they wanted to, but they're not required to over a certain period of time, and I don't know, three years may be too long. I, I don't know, some, two years in my mind seems about right. You have a period of time where you can figure out what you want to do with the property, so I'm just spitballing there, but.
And just as a point of clarification, you said that there was an, an attempt to talk with OGN E about what the, what that would require from them from a distance, and you have not received an answer. I realize there's, you know, there's relief built in, but I, that's a little concerning, too, I think. We, well, to be very honest, we did receive a response, but it did not address this question. So, I mean, we did hear from them, but it did not answer this question.
And then I found just a few things from Form Based Code, we're addressing your required on there. In Part III, the regulating plan, you've got a plan key. It kind of defines what we call it. The required building line, this line indicates the RBL for your- This line indicates the RBL for your site. The building shall be built to the RBL. And then in Part 402F sitting, it kind of really goes into building facade built to the RBL. Everything, you have a 24 inches within that line for facade, but it, it is all intended to be built to that line. It's not optional. So I think the R of the required build line RBL is pretty, pretty clear in the intent from how I'm reading it as a commissioner.
That's how I read it, too.
So you're saying that any future development is going to be right up to the build line?
Yes.
So when all of these are developed, we're going to have buildings right up to the build line, three foot off of the sidewalk? And then you're going to have these three that are pushed back there? Is that kind of what it's going to end up looking like?
There, I, I just want to add a comment that we kind of have some grandfathered uses already within Form Based Code that this would be, this is, we will always have a transitional period because the existing buildings are allowed to stay there and may not fit to the Form Based Code standards.
Right.
But in redevelopment, and I think there was also just a clarification to make about optional that you've come forward to the Form Based Code requirements at redevelopment. So we've seen a few of those. We had an applicant, it was an existing commercial building that was doing a renovation, but the scope was significant enough that it triggered that redevelopment. They had to do a PUD to keep their current uses allowed because they were in Form Based Code. So just redevelopment is what triggers that change from existing.
I could just add one more thing. These three structures that are grandfathered in, they also have the ability to expand those structures that they have. And if they do that, then they would be required to bring them forward. They don't have to tear them down, but they could put additional living space in the front of their units, which would in fact require them to bring it forward.
But then we're also saying, if we don't approve this, we're going to have two buildings that violated the code when they were built. Is that correct? Because if it was in place and they built it at three foot and it's actually?
I would be careful about us saying it violated the code because it wasn't, if it wasn't the code then, it's not a violation. So I think, and using the term mistake, I would be a little careful with that.
Okay. So are the exist, are all of the existing buildings in compliance when they were constructed?
Would you, can someone just toggle back to the existing build line that is on there before the amendment for Form Based Code? Because you could see then maybe where those line up with some of the newer structures. And Anais, if you could maybe direct us to some of the newer from this aerial on here? If we know when those may have been? And also, there would probably be application time periods versus instruction time periods that might impact for Form Based Code. That feels a little bit more like a research that staff may not be able to give us today, but if you happen to know.
Well, this is an aerial from 2021. So I believe the new structures that were built prior to the Form Based Code are second from Monat there to the east. And then skip a lot, and then one more. And then it's these new structures, which I can't, I don't think I can make my pointer point. Oh, here we go. Here, here, and here, oops, sorry. Realized I was clicking, and here. So those were, I guess you'd say recently redeveloped in the past decade?
Those, those are all redeveloped between 2010 to 2017 when Form Based Code was adopted.
Yeah, yeah.
It was.
So those are at the 25-
That was what coined the original term mini dorm.
Yeah, so they're-
And you see those all over the place.
Yeah, and, and so they're set at 25 feet back. So, yeah, so those three are the ones that have been recently and probably aren't going to be redeveloped anytime soon. So, and then this is.
I think it's important to point out that we, you see examples of these all throughout the Form Based Code, especially east of University, where Sims has examples, Apache has examples. And yes, it does look awkward on the, on the, on the build lines as you go along. And no, it's unlikely that they're going to be redeveloped anytime soon because they have enough value there that it would be extremely difficult to come in and purchase those and redevelop them. But that's also the, the long-term picture that I, that I referenced earlier that, you know, I think we need to be looking 20, 30 years out as opposed to what's going to be happening over the next two or three, two, two, three, four, five years.
So, so the two new buildings that are built three foot, were those built within, in compliance to the current, current requirements? Requirements we have today?
No, they weren't.
Okay.
Did they receive?
They received a building permit, yes.
Okay.
I would add, there is a required build line, but that section that Erica read about the 24 inches, it does allow for some flexibility there. So you're required to build within 24 inches to allow for people to have in and outs on their building. So while it is wanting you to build at that required build line, there is that 24 inches to allow for some flexibility in there. Because obviously, people have resource doorways, et cetera.
Along the lines of the discussion about the grandfathering, I think, I'm just curious if you all would agree with this. I was thinking of a term that we could potentially recommend. It's more about delayed implementation of the code with allowing for an opt-in to. So it's an approval with delayed implementation?
I don't know if delayed implementation, optionally delayed implementation? I think that optional versus to be able to do either or versus taking effect at a later time, I think.
It's more the-
Making sure what the intent is whenever that motion's being made.
Like the required portion is the delayed portion, but you could opt in to the three-foot build line if you choose to do so immediately? Something along those lines.
But if you choose to, if you allow them to opt in, does that allow them the opportunity to opt out and build it back? Like Steve said, if they've already got significant amount of funds built into that site plan, and then now they're going to have to go back and redo another one, but we give them the opportunity, could they build it nine feet back? And then we still don't have, like, we don't get to where we want to with a uniform frontage. Is that, or am I missing something?
My thinking, and I, I could be wrong in what I was hearing from others, was that this would be implemented. But you'd basically have the opportunity to sell the property if you don't want to comply with it. Or you, so you don't have the option to build it at nine foot, is a better way.
That's what you would write into, like, as a amended part, or? Okay.
So for a point of clarification, administrative adjustment allows for up to eight feet. I'm just going to share what Jane helped clue me in on for everybody. So, and then if you also have a 24-foot, or 24-inch difference for facade, that actually would get somebody already within a nine-foot capability. If this were to pass, they could still get the administrative adjustments potentially for eight feet plus a facade cushion of 24 inches as well.
Which would also allow you to accommodate for OGNB's requirements if necessary.
And that's what, yeah, Jane had indicated before was one of the intents of those administrative adjustments.
Yeah, that amendment before, that's why I'd asked for the reading of the verbiage of how many feet? Because it's not on there and the hyperlink isn't working. And so all I can see is administrative adjustment authority to address utility and related infrastructure conflicts. So I appreciated you reading that. But I think that administrative adjustment authority, it's pretty specific to utility. You know, the, the infrastructure of what is there utility-wise. So you're not automatically given that. The only thing you can really count on is that 24 inches, unless there is utility or infrastructure requiring up to an additional five feet.
Just a hypothetical, if this doesn't pass, does the owner of the building that was built to three foot have to come back for some type of an approval?
If I understand your question, if it, if there's a vote taken on an affirmative motion and it fails, there, it will go on to city council for consideration, and it will receive a second public hearing when it's considered by city council.
And if it fails there?
If it fails there, then repeat your question. I apologize.
The building that was built three foot versus nine, will they have to come back for some type of an approval?
For like a special use?
Oh, for something like that, that individual could request their own RBL adjustment. That's always an option under the code, and then there's a CCPUD option.
Okay. I think we've, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I think we've talked a whole lot about this, and I'm, I'm just not real comfortable right now. And so I, I see what we're trying to do, and I understand what we're trying to do. But I also understand that there are property owners that, that we're changing, we're just changing it on. I mean, I'm, I'm, it, I just, to me, it just doesn't, doesn't make me feel good about this. And so I, I'm just not going to be able to support the, support this, so.
Do we, I know we discussed the problems with postponement, but there are a lot of questions that don't seem to be answered completely. So I don't know.
I also found it concerning that the aerial was from 2021.
Well, here's, what rubs me wrong with this is, you know, as a, as a city, we're trying to do, I don't understand what the spirit of this is, but we've got two buildings that were built out of compliance. And so then we come back and ask, okay, can we change this so that now they're in compliance? Well, what does that, what precedent does that set going forward of, well, we can just do whatever we want, and then we'll come back and change things? So, I mean, I, not that I don't want this to look nice, I do. But I also don't want things to just get out of hand because there was a lot of time and effort put into developing this. And I can't believe that site surveys and things did not pick up proper building setbacks. And there's a lot of work that goes into preparing a site plan. A lot of hours that are looking at it, and I don't know how you miss something like that just on accident.
All right, does someone want to make a motion? Or there, is there additional discussion?
I make a motion to reject the, uh-
Just for a point of order, if we're, if we're going to do a rejection, that was one of the things that said, you make the motion to approve and then vote no. That's a-
That was my plan.
Okay.
If I have to revoke, okay, thank you.
So did you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. The ordinance is, is written.
And I'll second that.
And a vote?
You may vote.
It's been long enough.
Everyone has voted, motion failed one to six.
Okay. Back where we were on my agenda, moving to miscellaneous comments on here. Is there any miscellaneous discussion from staff? Jane's going to take her voice. Do commissioners have any comments they want to make?
Uh, just one comment. This upcoming Monday, really Monday and Tuesday, there are Strong Towns Community Action Lab. It's been ongoing for the last four or five months. This is the second site visit of Strong Towns staff. And on Monday evening at 6:30, I believe, is, is a public presentation. The public is invited and encouraged to attend that, that presentation from Strong Towns staff. It's an opportunity to comment on the process, provide your feedback. So I would encourage anybody to get the word out on that meeting, 6:30 Monday. And, and then there are a series of other stakeholder meetings throughout the lunch, basically lunchtime through the evening on Monday, and then, then in the morning of Tuesday. Certain stakeholders are kind of invited to different meetings, but I would encourage you to look into those to see if that may be a good fit for you to attend as well. And also, Planning Commission is invited to one of those meetings. So I'd encourage any of y'all that are able to make it.
For a few calendar items that went out, does anybody have the, the current time for the Planning Commission? When that came out?
A little confusing, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think we got a four and a 6:30, so just-
Thank you.
Whereas they're both, whereas two. So four is one of the meetings, and then there's also an additional meeting still related to Strong Towns at 6:30.
Yeah, and the four o'clock, 6:30 is kind of the public meeting. The four o'clock is an, is an open meeting for the public, if anybody would like to attend that as well.
So there is no two o'clock now, right? I've got a two, I've got a two, four, and-
I swear there was a two o'clock one, too.
I can explain.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a two o'clock that is specific to the mayor-appointed ad hoc committee, which does not include the Planning Commission. The four o'clock is for that ad hoc committee, which is technically optional, but it's a, I believe it's the mayor's group, which was designated as Planning Commission, City Council, and Management Team in addition to that ad hoc committee. And then at 6:30 is the public, the second public presentation by Strong Towns to the public in general, held in the evening so that the public in general can attend better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? And thank you, Commissioner Brewer, for clearing that up and telling us all about it.
I wish I was a little more clear with it, but thank you.
We're all doing the best we can. And if there's nothing else to come before the commission, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.